Welcome to the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, May 2nd. We will, it'll also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the housing authority. If we would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And begin. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a few moments of silence for Dolores Salmunovich, Mary Jane Blady, and Lucille Machado. And now we'll have the roll call.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ponse.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, the city attorney is in attendance via teleconference.
Hi there Scott. Good. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I've received none.
Nothing.
Okay. Department head reports.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Ornnkastarff and Harbormaster. We started off May with the installation of the city enflow as well as the shoreboat enflow. Today, the tuna club dock and the yacht club dock was installed by the mooring service. Harbor Maintenance installed the Barbara Pearson dinghy dock, but they're going to hold off putting in the ramp to that dock until next week. The swim line has been installed along the waterfront and the outrigger dock has also been installed there in front of the Blue Water Grill. Since my last report Tuesday, April 18th, patrol moored 368 boats for a total of 1,376 nights, just a slight gain from last month. Patrol responded to four medical calls, did nine public assists, and 131 security checks of the facilities. Harbor code, code, excuse me, on the mole for the month of April provided launch assistance with the crane five times, had 244 contacts regarding traffic control issues in the parking lot, did eight public assists, wrote five parking citations, and provided general maintenance to the, to the area. Any questions? Thank you.
No, thank you, I'm.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City staff, Michael Alagria, Fire Chief. So in April, we ran 82 total calls, 65 were EMS and 17 fire related. Last week, myself, Phil Menudo, Juan Snerros, and Jimmy Buddy traveled to Indianapolis to convene with 30,000 other firefighters from, from the, around the world. We had Ukrainian firefighters there, Mexican firefighters there. Big group of networking being done, and the guys got a whole day of live fire in 30-degree weather, and then a whole day of forcible entry, breaking down doors, cutting.
Oh wow.
All kinds of cutting tools, and then we had two days of classroom, different classes on leadership, fire techniques, nozzles, you name it, it was there. And then the last day, we went shopping in the convention center to look up and get quotes on new trucks and different quotes from across the country to see who could get us the best deal.
Sweet.
So that was, that was a lot of fun. We got pictures, we could show you later on that. As far as code, code issued, the code report came out, 348 citations last month. So they've been going out one or two days a week at 5:00 AM to get the overnighters that aren't supposed to be, and then there's a lot of 23 stickers still out that they are getting.
Wow. Good. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor, Council, City, executives, sorry.
Manager.
City staff.
Folks.
Him.
Since our last council meeting, we had 125 calls for service.
93 of those were observations made by the deputies and 32 were actual call-ins from the, the public. We made three arrests during that time. There were two for drunken public and one for domestic violence. We had five vehicle citations, and, and everyone knows, we have a new judge starting officially in two weeks. She'll be the new judge at the courthouse. She came over on Friday. Her name is Nicole Hessman.
He's man.
She's fantastic. It's a he's man, I'm sorry, two Es. And anyways, I spoke to her quite a bit on Friday, and we'll be working together as far as the programs. She's been aware of the shortstop program starting on Tuesday, and so I'm working with her to make sure that everything's going to be running smooth. That'll be starting this Tuesday, and like I said last meeting, we have 12 that are going to be in the program, and that hopefully will be, you know, the success for us. Any questions?
What, what time is, is that shortstop program start that day?
You know what? I have it written down, I'll have to get back to you.
If you let me know, I'd love to attend.
Okay.
See how that goes. Yeah, I'm excited about that. Yes, and if anybody wants to go by the courthouse on the 12th, Judge Merritt, that will be his last day there, so if he wanted to say hello or goodbye, that'd be great.
What time?
Well, he gets there, I don't know, they were late last time because of fog, but probably 11:30 to 12, something like that, because they usually go to lunch.
Yeah.
And leave about one or so, 1:30. Just to stop in and say hi, nothing else.
Thank you.
Great. No, thank you.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just real quick, I have a presentation later on the operating budget, but just to touch on visitor-driven revenues. Nightly mooring and cross-channel warfage were both down around 25% from the months January through March. You know, weather does play a big part in our harbor revenue, so I don't think that should be too much of a surprise. But from Jan, from July to December, we were on track matching last year's highs, so we still should be on good track to meet our budget estimates, which were below our kind of 22 highs. TOT, I believe, last time I reported, we were down in February close to 40%. That was skewed because we had a number of late payments. Happy to report that TOT for February likely is going to be down in the low 20%. And March looks to be on a similar track, down around 20%. We're still getting payments coming in, so it's, it's hard to know for certain, but I think it'll be somewhere in the 20s down. Again, we should be well ahead of where we were budget-wise, but it just kind of again stresses, we can't control the weather, and we definitely see a difference when we have good weather as far as number of visitors. Other than that, I'll be presenting on the operating budget today. At the next council meeting, the second one in May, we'll be discussing the capital budget, and then with the goal of having a presentation of the full budget, the first meeting in June, and then to be adopted in the, the second meeting of June. So right now, we're on track, I think, to, to meet those meetings, but we'll definitely keep you up to date if, if something changes there.
Great. Any questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. On Friday, we will be celebrating Cinco de Mayo down by Wrigley Stage at 4:00 PM. There'll be Mexican food supplied by the fourth hole. We will have three different dance ballet folklorico dance groups performing with dancers from the ages of six, eight, six-year-old all the way up to much older. Performance starts at 4:15, will end around 6:00 PM. Afterwards, there'll be more performances and a ballet at the Catalina Island Museum from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. We are going to be having 180 visitors from the LA County Explorer Program on Saturday. They will be doing their, what they call their color run at 8:00 AM, and they will go from the stage and run, it's about 120 kids that will run from the stage up to Hamilton Cove and back. And then after the run, they will be coming back down and be doing some community service, picking weeds, doing a beach cleanup to kind of help unify Catalina. If you don't know what the Explorer Program is, it's kind of a recruitment program for the police department, which teaches the kids about law enforcement, allows them to be able to get maybe down the road in future into the law enforcement place, but also it's just a great place for them to help develop confidence as well as skills and discipline to be able to move forward in a positive direction in their life. It's something that we hope maybe down the road, we might be able to work with LA County and bring, bring it back to Avalon, which was here probably maybe 15 years ago.
Wow.
Last but not least, come see some wacky fun competition at JMF this Saturday. The old man rugby team is back. It's about eight teams from around the world, teams from New Zealand, there's a team from Hawaii, a team from South Africa, the LA Rugby Club. These are all men 35 years and older, reliving their glory days, and their games and festivities will be starting at 8:00 AM till 5:00 PM. It's really a lot of fun if you have not gone up and watched them play. You will probably see them downtown, say hi, they're a lot of fun group of men. All contracts have been executed for the Fourth of July. That's the USC Band Hotel, the barge, the fireworks, so we're right on track to have a great Fourth of July. Next couple of weeks, we will be refurbishing and securing the apparatuses at the skate park. A lot of them have started again, a little dilapidated because of the, the weather, and since we do have the extra funds in the skate park this year to get most of them, you know, secured, we have some rot underneath that we need to kind of rebuild, so we want to make sure it's safe, and so the next couple of weeks, we'll be refurbishing many of those apparatuses. Two permits have been revoked for the vending license, the street vending, and we're moving forward in fulfilling them, making phone calls and seeing the next person down the list. We have about eight to nine people on the waiting list, so we assume that we will start to fulfill those quickly. The other four are promising to make sure that they do have their, their vend, their vendor, their, their, yeah, their vendors up by June. So hopefully, we'll start to see them come back out there. There's one that's kind of like a little convenience store, another one is Ben's Pretzels coming back, and then we have, we have one that's going to be ice cream, and then one that's going to be merchandise. And so hopefully, we'll start to see those out, out and about.
Are we kind of just going to let them choose the most they want to be in operation, or are we going?
No, we're, we're, we're moving forward since coming out of COVID, and, and we, some of them re-upped, so we allowed them to re-up, and so they re-upped, and so I just said, well, what we'll do is, starting this year, we'll start, we'll start, you need to be out there by June.
Yeah, great.
And if you're, if you're not out there and you're not being consistent, the 16 hours a week, there's plenty of people who would like this, have this opportunity.
Great. Oh, thank you. So the two were revoked because they didn't re-up, or because?
Um, yeah. They, they wanted to actually try to sell them, and I'm like, that's not how this works. They wanted to hold it, and they were going to get it, and then they were going to try to resell them, and that, that's not how this works. And so, yeah, so I was in, then they thought that they might be able to get something going, and they've realized they're, they're too busy to try to get it up and going. So I just went ahead and revoked, revoked the permit instead of waiting for them. They've had long enough time to make it happen.
Good decision.
Yeah.
And let me ask you another question regarding that, because you have a map on where they can be situated and all that. What about Casino Dock?
We don't own that. So they-
We don't even have the patio right now?
They, I, what I have, what I have let them know is, they can reach out to the owners of Casino Dock, and if they will allow it, they, they can, they can do it on there. But from my understanding is they're not allowing it at this point.
Okay, because they have the whole place?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Which would be a great spot.
I know.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, oh, wait.
All right.
You forgot something.
Forgot something. Sunday, May 7th, the flags, all US flags will be at half-staff in honor of firefighters who have fallen in the line of duty last year.
Okay, great. Oh, thank you. Yes.
Good evening, Council, Jimmy Milak, Maintenance Superintendent, just filling in for Bob. Bob's on a very rare, sorely needed vacation. Actually, he's just returning, and I just texted him, he just landed, so.
Okay.
Basically, I just wanted to jump up here and answer any questions you might have. Obviously, you received my updates, just wanted to see if any questions about that. Otherwise, this week, we've been working on primarily a lot of landscaping on Long Front Street and some other minor projects, but you'll be updated on that later in a week. We did, we did have a minor scare, well, it could have been a major scare. This morning, we had a, we had a complete failure of our Catherine lift station. It was an issue due to a power panel. We were very close to having a complete sewer backup, and all I want to say, I want to give a big shout and thank you to our crew, to Montrose, and to John Gilbert. I've been saying that a lot lately, but if, if we did not have John Gilbert today, we would have had a major sewage leak.
Oh my gosh.
So hats off to John Gilbert for getting the, the electrical supply working again for the Catherine lift station, so.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Anybody, any other questions?
No. Nope. Good job.
Is that something we need to put generators onto, or something to have for backup?
I'll cover that in five seconds.
Okay. All right, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple things tonight, just wanted to point out to the public that the city has a number of open positions out there on the website. Please go to the website, we're looking to fill, both part-time and full-time, involved with Public Works, Community Service, Finance Department. We are actively looking to, to fill these, so please look at them, inquire, we have online application process, so you can do it there. If you have any questions, please call Stephanie Campbell in HR. This week, we had, yesterday, Mayor and I were on with Southern California Edison for our monthly meeting. A lot of positive things coming out of our discussion with Edison, one being that they are putting together a zonal electrification study, where they're looking at the city of Avalon, both our housing stock and vehicle stock, to put together a study and recommendations on how to move, hopefully to move the island to all-electric. That's their goal. They're providing us with some sample ordinances regarding new construction and things that are being used around the state to move both construction and vehicles to all-electric. So we look forward to continuing to work with Edison in that regard. We also had a good discussion to try to get both the City Planning Department and Edison on the same page communicating regarding water allocation for building permits that come in, to make sure we're sharing the, the information that's needed between the two groups. So Edison's provided a form that makes a lot of sense for us to use, so we'll start implementing that. Real quick, Jamie mentioned it regarding John Gilbert. John Gilbert also, we lost our generator out at the power plant a couple weeks ago. We were able to secure a temporary one. John has wired that one in, so it's operational. We are also looking to buy a, a new generator because it's simply critical to have that backup resource out there, and if we're able to secure a backup to that, Hardwired will do that also, so, to have on here. So we're, we're not only pricing those out, but also looking at the, the lead time of how long that's going to take us. But right now, we have a rental that's here, that's hooked up, that's working, that's operational, so yes, that's, that's there for the power failure. The panel going out is, that's irrespective of the power, so again, you know, the, we have what I've been told to be a roughly a 12-hour window if we lose power before it really gets serious. Probably the panel is a little more serious than that even, so hopefully, we'll move beyond that. In the meantime, Bob Greenlaw and I have been having discussions with both Perk and Montrose as far as transferring over the plant. There's a number of capital projects that are being finished up right now that Montrose is handling, but Perk is involved in those discussions, so they know exactly how and what's being done. We'll have a follow-up with Perk this week to make sure that the contract and the assignment are all in place and to see what ideas they're going to have for the plant. But I think over the first three to six months that they're in charge, we're going to see a number of different recommendations hopefully from them as far as plant improvement, so I look forward to, to that. And I believe that is it.
Okay.
Thank you.
City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Just enough that next meeting, I'll be on vacation, so Melissa Crosswith will be taking my place, and I will be in Avalon, the first meeting in June, along with Christine Guerrero, who's your league representative, and she'll be available to meet with Council in the afternoon to go over benefits that the league has, and then she'll be presenting at the council meeting that night.
Great. Okay, thank you. All righty. Councilmember reports.
Okay, I'll go first. Everybody looks down this way. The newbie, go first. Okay, so the, the dialysis town hall, when that happened, there was a lot of questions raised by some of the folks that were there about how they might be able to raise money to get something going if the hospital felt that they couldn't do it, and there was a lot of discussion about it anyway. They promised that they would follow up and give us a report and answer those questions, and they have done that, and Jason assures me that that information is going to be available to the public very, very soon. So thank you very much for that follow-up, Jason, at all, and I appreciate it. I also had a couple of conversations with some concerned community members. One was coming out of the whole vacation rental stuff, and it was actually a very positive conversation with her, and she had some very good ideas, and one of them, I believe, was implemented already, which was the, the radio button for, because there was a discussion about how vacation rentals that, that get too many noise complaints and all that kind of stuff, we could actually revoke their, their license, and it was very difficult to navigate through our new website to find the form to do it, so I, I checked it out right before the meeting, and it's under services, and there's a little thing you can click that says reported concern. And so it's not just vacation rentals, it's every single kind of concern you would want to voice, life-threatening, code enforcement, vacation rentals, road closures, you know, water conservation violations, and all that kind of stuff. So, so thank you for that, and I'm glad that that happened, and thank you, Devin, she's probably the one that did that.
Correct.
And then another one was talking about the whole vehicle thing, since we did the, we passed the ordinance about electrifying and starting with commercial autoettes, and she was wondering why that, and I said, well, because commercial has to have off-street parking, so then we don't have to worry about cords across the sidewalk and all that kind of stuff. And she mentioned, you know, I've actually heard of solar-powered golf carts. So it's basically an electric golf cart with solar panels on the roof. So the solar panels charge the batteries in the electric golf cart, reducing the need for a plug-in. You can, you might have to plug it in at some point, but you know, like Edison was talking about, working on, working on the infrastructure for electrification and all that kind of stuff, but, so I've started looking into the availability to see how expensive they are and how available solar-powered golf carts are. It doesn't look like they're really readily accessible, but you know, so the way it looks is if you buy an electric golf cart, you can buy the kit to put the solar panel on the top. So maybe John McTell, if you're listening, or My King, if you're listening, that could be an interesting way to go with you selling new vehicles, is get electric and, and outfit them with solar, and that might help a lot in, in our-
That's very cool.
Yeah, our progress towards electrification. And then I attended a webinar on addressing community needs through the arts, which I thought sounded really, really interesting, and I thought it would be, you know, performance and all that kind of stuff, but it, it actually was different. It was just about how to, how to focus people's attention more artistically and, you know, gather stuff. But one thing that a lot of these cities did had community forums with people coming in and designing and getting involved with the different projects, and I thought that that was really, really interesting, and I'll, I'll keep that in mind for something going forward if we have an initiative that we want to launch, you know, maybe we could do that with the whole dang recycle stuff that's still a mess.
Exactly.
But anyway, that's about it for me.
That's great.
Was thankful to have attended with everybody the meeting with the Love Catalina team last week. Hopefully, some good discussions came out of that, some good, I don't know, airing grievances. It felt very Festivus for a little bit there, but was mostly positive, which I was really thankful for, and was good overall.
Definitely, it's great.
And then I'll be attending Gateway Cities tomorrow night. I did want to ask a question about the Edison conversation, just if, it seems that we're having more power outages recently. I'm curious to know if we're getting to that point before summer, and we're looking to move towards electrification in general, what's happening for backup, for backup? I mean, it literally knocked out everything, including all towers and services, for quite some time, a couple of times over the last few months. So just trying to understand what the play is for that? Is that, is there some, a solution, or we just, that's what we're going to do?
And we didn't discuss that, so Dave's got it.
For the next, for the next conversation, if we could.
Right.
Okay.
Am I allowed to share any knowledge that I have, because I work there?
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind if you do.
Sure.
Okay. Scott, is that okay?
Yes, as long as there, there's no action taken by the council, and they're not about a decision, so yes.
Okay. So one of the, one of the problems is just the age of the generators themselves, and I believe on that conversation, they were talking about the new ones that we are getting in.
The two, yeah.
So that is definitely going to help out. And then there was some stuff that was actually related to the storms, so things out in the interior, you know, they got a little unsettled and stuff like that, and so they would drop, and, but, so the E-crew has been like crazy out there and fortified and re-fortified and all that kind of stuff, so Edison is aware of it, they're working on it, and hopefully, we've got one of the new generators already, it's not installed, and I think we have a second one on the way, so it's definitely in the works.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wonder if there's a need for discussing as a future-proofing redundancy in certain areas? in certain areas where the source of things are not all coming from the same space, because the same storms are going to keep happening and get worse, and you know, just it's, it's just a little worrisome. I'm excited, we're heading in that direction, and I want us to, but it also needs to make sense for everybody else.
Right. Jamie has something to add to this.
Please, I'm going to switch your mic. It's not working right now.
Oh, thank you.
I thought he was going to have the answer.
Mary, do you think you can use that one?
Testing, one, two.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. Okay, and, yes, Anya?
I'll go next. So I had previously mentioned the finance workshops, and we finally have dates. Dave Hart has joined us, so it'll be City Rec and US Bank holding these workshops. This first one we're doing, it's, we're calling it the Road to Home Ownership, so that'll be the first subject we cover. And it will be held here at the city chambers. It will be May 17th as well as May 24th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we'll make sure to post on social media, and we're going to have a couple flyers, so we'll put around town.
Cool. Yeah. And the lady's name is?
Loriann.
Yes, I met with her, she's really great. A lot of this isn't just ownership here, but it's also ownership, yeah, ownership in general, which is nice.
I think we made sure to emphasize on that, to let her know that we don't really, we don't want to pitch anything, it's really just education.
And the prices of homes here versus the prices in some of the towns.
She's got a lot to cover, I know, so I'm attending for myself as well.
Yeah, very, very good.
A lot of the stuff that she, she just thinks that a lot of people don't understand how they can afford a home, it's a lot more simpler than most people understand. But she's also going to hit on budgeting, how to budget within your own life, to, you know, help you with that, so you can learn to save for that, using other sources to come in with first-time homeownership. And she's going to show you how to move in that direction and how to contact those government agencies to help you with first-time homeownership. So she's going to just take that whole process from the beginning of where you have nothing, all the way to being able to own a home. So that's, that's the idea, just to educate them and educate our public that it is possible.
And along those lines, can we still do the first-time homebuyers thing? Or did we just stop doing that altogether? Is that something?
It's my understanding we stopped doing that, but I don't know the ramifications of reinstituting, we can certainly...
I don't know if we had any money left in that we did three of them, and I think we ran out of money.
We ran out of money.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Oh, last thing I did want to mention. She was able to get two lovely ladies that work with her on the mainland that are also have professional knowledge on this subject, that speak Spanish, and they will be attending, so everybody is welcome.
Yeah, oh, that's nice. Excellent. Thank you.
I just want to say it was a very positive co-meeting with both the chamber and Love Catali, with the city and Love Catalina. It was good to hear everybody voice their opinions and everything, it just felt really positive, so very happy with that, and very happy that the chamber voted to support the Fourth of July programs and the Christmas lighting, so it was very positive, so kudos to both groups.
Yes, making it happen, yeah. Yesterday, I attended the Carnival Cruise meeting that they had at the Trailhead, and they kind of explained the process about if you had a business, because they used to have nine vendors, for lack of a better word, that would participate, they're down to three, and what they're trying to do, of course, is improve the visitor experience, because a lot of things are, they have stats on that, statistics on people's visit and how well they liked it, and that they come back and that kind of thing, and they also were looking at people that might want to, and let's say I have a tour, but now I'm going to throw in a buffalo milk, or I'm going to give you a ball cap, or stuff to just improve the quality of their experience. So I know they're, they were meeting with people all day yesterday and today, and I talked to Luis, the one that, one of the gentleman that was holding the meeting, and he said, "There's still work to be done." So, so anyway, that was it. Okay. And the choir from Washington yesterday was very, very good. I want to thank Vern and my husband for putting all this up together, 24 microphones and all that, but they were very good, they're from a private school in Washington, so it was very nice that the parents of those children, you know, educate, or you know, arts in the school, which is really important, so anyway, they were all great. There's 20 singers, and they were very, very good. And they sang a lot of old songs, like "My Mother Would Know," you know? "My Dead Mother Would Know." Anyway, all right, oral communication, this is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
And Mayor, while Paul is making his way to the microphone, I forgot, I wanted to mention one more thing, that the Catalina Island Medical Center is doing a community health needs assessment survey. If you don't know where that is, I mean, if you don't, if you don't see it on social media or whatever, there are signs in the post office arcade with a QR code in English and in Spanish, and you can take the survey, and it only takes about 10 minutes. It doesn't say how long they're going to have this open, but I would encourage everyone to do it, because everybody talks about the hospital. This is your opportunity to put your money where your mouth is. Tell, I took the survey, and it's very interesting, and there are spaces where you can comment on what, but it just, your assessment of our, our needs and what we have available here, so it's a very good survey, so please, I encourage everyone to take that survey. Thank you.
I did. Paul Burchell, Avalon Library. Good afternoon, good evening. I just wanted to do a quick promotion of some of the stuff that's happening down at your library in the month ahead. Coming up on the 10th, I have a magician, another magician, I like my magicians. May 10th, Zany Zoe, she used to be part of a team that came out here quite a bit called Raphael and Zoe, I think. They were very popular, she makes tables float and stuff like that, and very, very, very good performer, very excited to have her out here. All the kids are welcome, I hope they'll all come.
What time is that?
Four o'clock, four o'clock on Wednesday, the 10th. Also, we're starting our cycle of Smarty Pants Storytime, Saturdays at 11:00 a.m. Come and see me acting like a dope, I'll read the stories. Coming up on Friday for Cinco de Mayo, we're going to decorate suns, we're going to decorate ceramic basque suns. I've got some lovely paint, we're going to, I've got about 20 of these, it's going to be really beautiful.
Is that all day long, or is that a certain time?
Four o'clock, I put them out at four o'clock. I sort of mean them to be activities that people come for, but at the moment, people don't come to stuff, they want to come and go, so I have them as kits, most of them take the kits, and then they sit down and do them anyway, but not at four o'clock, but at four o'clock on the day, I put them out.
Okay.
Similarly, on Friday, the 26th, which is a bit of a jump, I don't have these in order, I apologize, we're going to make cloth caps to celebrate the starting of summer. I've got a lot of white caps, and you just color them in with fabric markers, it's going to be fun, everybody's going to have crazy caps around town. I'm working hard to continue our games club, which is another of these drop-in things that I think are working really well. I put out a bunch of games, we've got the Clue, we've got the Monopoly, we've got the Uno, got chess, Connect Four, some other stuff. Come on in, four to six, I just put them out, it's like a whole bunch of different ages coming together and doing things. It's kind of nice, small, but sort of pleasant and intimate, and it's just a nice neighborhood thing to do. We're changing Wednesdays for our history talk. I love these, I love hearing Chuck Liddell talk about Avalon history and legends and gossip, yes, gossip. So Wednesdays at two o'clock, not every Wednesday, but Wednesday, the 10th and Wednesday, the 24th, so the second Wednesday and the last Wednesday. He starts with a pre-prepared presentation of some aspect of history, and then he opens it for trivia questions. So it's sort of a mix of locals and visitors, so you get, "Where was the casino built?" Or you also get, "Who was, you know, Ms. Eisenhower's granddad?" or something like that. So it's a mix, it's a mix of questions and stuff like that. I want to bring back our adult coloring, I'm going to start that as an experiment on Thursday, the 11th at two o'clock, no, four o'clock, I'm going to change that right here on the spot, nothing happens at the library at two o'clock, let's do it four o'clock, four o'clock. So I'll have a lot of really nice coloring pages, a lot of really nice pens, it's calm, if you want, I'll play some nice music, I guess I could have some tea, probably no tea, but, uh, let's see. To celebrate Asian Pacific Heritage Month, we're going to make ribbon lays on Friday, May 12th at four o'clock, and we're also going to have some polka dot art, which is in the style of an artist by the name of Yayoi Kusama. I'll do a little studying up on that before I do this program, but it looks pretty fabulous, a lot of polka dot art. What else am I forgetting? Well, that'll do for now. Off the Island Book Club, since nobody came last month, we're going to do the book again.
Oh.
That's so mean. Peranisi by Susanna Clark, which is a book I really like. I got five books, somebody better come to it, one, two, three, four, five. Anyway, thank you very much. A lot of these programs are done thanks to our friends at the library group, thank you very much. And that's about all I got for right now. I got a calendar, if you want it, I'll put some out in the lobby and also at various places around town.
We've got lots going on. Thank you, Paul.
I forgot to mention, we did get to attend the musician that you had, the bilingual musician. Yeah, Natalia was amazing, she was so much fun. She's on my Instagram, if you want to check it out, if you need 40 minutes of dancing and singing, just to like get up and move.
Wow. Excellent. Okay, and do we have anything?
I do, I've received one communication via Ask.com from Kate Rudon. The email states, "Dear Mayor, City Manager, City Attorney, and Councilmembers, I agreed with your guest speaker for the dual chamber and council meeting on April 20th. The ideal of sustained tourism would benefit the community of Avalon. We have a lot of work to do. There is a perception that a transient rental license is guaranteed if an owner wishes to apply for one. In reality, a transient rental license requires approval and scrutiny by the city. If a transient rental license is approved, it comes with requirements and obligations attached to the license. The legal relationship and obligations pertaining to a transient rental license is between the city of Avalon and the homeowner. A homeowners' association is not a party to the relationship. I'd like to provide updated information to the city of Avalon saturation data map for Hamilton Cove. Two single-family homes have been converted into duplexes, and between them have been awarded four transient rental licenses. That brings the total saturation to 68%. In addition, we have 19 owners with permits slash licenses who are not actively renting. If all choose to short-term rent, that will raise saturation to 78%. How is this sustainable for residential community? We need better planning, effective ordinances, and most importantly, enforcement. I thank David, Michael, and Mary for being with me to discuss and review the actions of other cities in response to their short-term rental issues. As your, as our city council, I urge you to keep the problem of saturation on the front burner as it affects residents and visitors alike. Kate Rudon, 95 Playa Azul."
Thank you. And we have all received that in our, yeah. Okay, presentations.
Presentation tonight is going to focus on the current draft of the city's operating budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Just want to start the presentation by emphasizing that it is still in a draft stage, and this is where we're at, based on discussions between finance, city manager, and department leaders, so kind of to take a step back on that process. Back in January, I prepared, using our online budget tool, a system to allow department heads to go in and build out their budgets. I met with every department head multiple times to kind of go over what their, their current spend this year and in prior years looked like, to help them build out their proposals for, for next year. From there, we presented those to Dave and had further discussions with Dave on what the requests were. And what you're seeing now is really just kind of a midway point in that process, so I just wanted to caveat it, these are kind of working numbers, but we wanted to let you know where we stood. Again, the amounts are subject to change based on changes in revenue estimates, further review by management, and also by feedback from council and the public as well. So just because what we're presenting here might not look like what we're going to present in a month, so if you do have questions on what we have in here, and if you don't have the question ready tonight, we're happy to discuss it between now and June, when we present the budget for adoption. Again, with the presentation, it's focused on operating expenditures, and so by that I mean salaries, benefits, maintenance operations, contract services, and internal services. So the internal services, again, are admin, finance, and kind of the activities that are done that benefit kind of all the departments across the board. Then lastly, you'll see a lot of labor numbers, and it's always in FTE, full-time equivalents. It's particularly relevant in departments where there are part-time employees, so we might have 13.1 FTEs in Harbor Patrol, that includes the full-timers as well as a number of part-timers, but when I give the numbers, it's in the full-time equivalent number. If you look closely, the numbers on this slide change from the version of the presentation I sent you last night. So that's the challenge, and I'm trying to get you a copy in advance, you know, I'm always still working on it. What I tried to do with this slide is taking out the hospital activity and the chambers' percentage of the TOT, and really just show what revenues are available to the city to spend, and then how we're planning on spending those, at least from an operating standpoint. The version I shared last night, I removed the city's sales tax rather than the hospital's sales tax, and so you can see the numbers are a little better in this slide. So just as you look at that version, just keep that in mind. But again, the, the top line is the operating revenues of the city, and the operating expenditures are the salaries, benefits, contracted services, maintenance operations, and they're breaking down by the major departments within the general fund. So looking at the column furthest to the right, that's our fiscal year 24 proposed. After excluding the pass-through revenues, right now, we're looking at operating revenues of a little over $11 million. Then operating expenditures in the various accounts would leave approximately $1.1 million in net operating revenues. Again, I want to stress, that's before any capital spend in the general fund, as well as there are certain funds that are, require subsidies from the general fund each year, but at least that's where we stand right now as far as net operating revenue for the general fund, based on the, kind of the details I'm going to present in the next few slides. So again, this is a breakdown just further by department as well as by expenditure type. The column to the left, full-time equivalents, just to highlight, if you're going down to Public Works and you see 6.8, that's not to say we have 6.8 employees in Public Works, that's, we have 6.8 full-time equivalents with time charged to Public Works. So a Public Works employee may have a portion of his time charged to the general fund, as well as a portion to the harbor, the sewer, the garage, saltwater, et cetera. And so that's what that full-time equivalent number is, it's not an actual body, it's the kind of percentage of his time that's allocated to, to the general fund. Similarly, with the fire department, we have 10 fire employees, but because the standard schedule for a firefighter is 2,700 some hours, that's how we can have 13 FTEs with only 10 firefighters. Just wanted to kind of call those out. You can see salaries and benefits make up about 42% of our operating expenditures in the general fund. Maintenance expenses account for about 11%. Contracted services are about 26% of our operating expenditures, and the large ones there are law enforcement, so that would be our LA County Sheriff's contract, as well as planning, for planning consulting services, as well as some of the additional report, so the mode shift or the active transportation, those fall under those contracted services in planning. And then lastly, internal services, that's the general fund's share of finance, admin, HR, the garage, et cetera, and that accounts for about 20% of the operating expenditures in the general fund. So I don't necessarily want to go through each one of these in detail, and I realize to the audience, the font's fairly small standing here looking at it, but what this is, is it's a breakdown to provide council kind of a one-page sheet... But what this is, is it's a breakdown to provide council kind of a, a one-page sheet for each department to kind of get a better understanding of the nature of the operating expenditures that are within the, the particular department. So the first one up is the law enforcement. You can see there are no planned budgeted spend in salaries and benefits, and that's because it's all through the county sheriff's contract. For the departments that do have labor associated, it, it's really all driven by the, the MOU. So if there's, the, the salaries and benefit number would include health benefits, employer taxes, our calpers' contributions. So that dollar amount isn't just salaries, it's also all those other factors. And to kind of give a rough scale, and it varies depending on department, depending on whether an employee is a classic or PEPRA member. But you know, for every dollar in salary spend, there's probably 50 cents in benefits, employer taxes, calpers, et cetera. So that dollar number when I presented, it's, it's salaries and its benefits.
I have a question about the sheriffs. So when they say that they're down six to eight people, it doesn't affect our contract at all because they come back and say, well, we give you all these extra people anyway? Is that kind of the answer we would get?
So I, I, from a, from a contract standpoint, we've been paying them each month the, the normal contract amount, as far as what their, their staffing level is.
I mean, shouldn't it kind of be contingent on?
Well, I think their staffing levels have been the same. I think the, the pool of sheriffs that they're, they're using to get to those staffing levels is what's down. I mean, I, I don't know if Matt's in a position now to talk about it. I don't want him to.
I mean, I know they're, I know they're paying overtime to their folks, but.
To my knowledge, at least that overtime hasn't been impacting our normal contract amount that we pay each month.
Well, it shouldn't because they're down so many staff people.
Right. And we, we've been paying the, the normal contract amount, so I, I don't.
I don't know if Matt, if that's in your bailiwick to respond to. I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, we actually fill our, our, our minutes that we give to the city. Any overtime that's created is, is paid for by the county itself.
Okay.
So there's nothing built additional to the city at all.
Yeah, because in terms of the number of people in the contract, it probably says so many, but, but I think the conversation is always that, but we give you three dispatchers and you give you, give us more for our buck than what we're actually paying for.
Correct. The, the contract actually is only five and a half deputies total.
Right, right.
And in fact, there's a lot more than that.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
And I can, I can safely say we wouldn't be able to, to provide the same level of service for the, the price the.
Oh, yeah.
The, the county gives us. So we are, we are appreciative for that.
Yes.
You can see, though, the, the sheriff contract is budgeted to go up about 10%, about 7.6% in kind of the base. And then there's also an additional increase. And this is across the board for all contract cities, and it relates to the portion that we pay for insurance. So they have, they're not covered under our general liability insurance. There's separate coverage there. The only reason I bring that up is because we have other insurances that the city has, and those are anticipated to go up considerably, double digits next year as well. So it's, it's not the sheriffs alone that are experiencing that level of increase with insurance costs. So again, I don't necessarily want to go through each of these, but I'll, I'll pick on the fire department as well. You can see we broke down their maintenance and operation expenditures. And just so you can see how you can read the slide, the safety supplies, the account number would be 102453545, and there's 5,000 budgeted. And then the farthest column to the right shows 0%. So essentially, the ask is the same as last year. Last year in the budget, there was 5,000. This year, they're requesting the same 5,000. The percentage is based after any mid-year amendment. So if we did increase an account at mid-year, that's what the, any percentage increase would be off the mid-year fiscal '23 number, not necessarily the number as adopted last June. So again, I, I don't necessarily want to go through each line item, but I want to give council the opportunity to look at it. And if you do have questions with the department heads, we can have it here, or we can always have those conversations offline as well. Again, with the internal services, we have three internal service funds, general admin, insurance, and vehicle maintenance. Not every account, or not every department necessarily is charged all three. So for example, we don't charge any insurance costs to the law enforcement department because their insurance is covered in their contract. Similarly, we wouldn't charge any vehicle maintenance to plannings if planning doesn't have any vehicles. So just something to keep in mind there. Last one I just wanted to touch on, because it's, it's maybe not the most evident, is we do have some smaller funds that roll into the general fund. So for example, we have our city infrastructure fund, Fund 105, our storm drain fund, Fund 124, our cemetery fund, and our successor agency fund. All of those roll into the general fund, but they don't necessarily neatly fit into one particular department. And so this slide is a bit of a catch-all. The successor agency one, so the Fund 136, we do get reimbursed through our ROPS payment for that. And so that's why in the salaries and benefits, you see there's 200,000. And that is a portion of my time, a portion of the city manager's time, and that gets reimbursed through our, our ROPS payment. I think the others are fairly straightforward. The other piece that might not be as obvious is our, our Montrose or our sewer wastewater treatment contract. It is divided between the sewer fund, saltwater fund, and the storm drain fund does pay a small percentage of that contract. And so that's what the wastewater treatment plant contract budget for 78,500. That's a portion of the overall Montrose or the, the new contract. So again, moving on with the harbor fund, this is just looking at harbor operations. So not any capital activity, just kind of the, the core day-to-day operations in the harbor. So Fund 103, you can see our actual revenues in fiscal years 20 and 21 were 5.9 and 5.6 million. You know, passenger restrictions on cross-channel, the loss of cruise ship warfage. The, the harbor was more impacted as a percentage from COVID than, say, the general fund was. But you can see fiscal year '22 was a strong rebound, 7.3 million. We're estimating this year to come in at 7.4 million. A lot of that gain is in cruise ship, or actually, all of that gain is in cruise ship. I, I expect cross-channel nightly moorings to be down slightly, but will be up for the year because of the, the strong cruise ship numbers. Again, we didn't have cruise ships for the entirety of fiscal year '22 where we did for '23. And then for fiscal year '24, you can see we're having it budgeted slightly below where I expect to end this year as far as revenues go. And we'll continue to look at those numbers as, as we get more payments coming in. So on the, kind of the bottom row, you can see in fiscal year '20, from harbor operations, our operating expenditures exceeded our revenues by almost 500,000. But we've really turned that around in fiscal year '22 and '23. We should be adding to our, our working capital, our reserves in the harbor fund. Again, if we wanted to have six months or 50% reserves for the harbor fund, we'd be looking at approximately 3 million, whereas we should be somewhere around 2 million heading into next fiscal year. So definitely, you know, much stronger than where we've been. So it's definitely a positive turnaround there, so I don't want to take that away. But we're still slightly below kind of where we'd like to be with that fund. So again, this is just a breakdown of the harbor fund's operating expenditures, not so much by department, more by classification. So within administration, we have 2.9 FTEs, and that's because a portion of the harbor master's time is charged to harbor capital activities for overseeing the, the capital program there. The other two would be the assistant harbor master and the senior admin assistant in the harbor. Harbor operations includes harbor patrol, so those would be harbor patrol ones, twos, and supervisors. There are 13.1 FTEs. That's nine full-time employees, and then 4.1 full-time equivalents with part-time hours. Harbor maintenance has three employees. And then we have one parking control maintenance, as well as in the budget, we have three harbor sanitation maintenance. We're, we're definitely looking to fill those positions for next year, so I'll just take this opportunity for anyone listening at home to apply. We are definitely wanting to try to bring that back staffing up to how it was pre-COVID. So if you know anyone who might be interested, it's, it definitely sounds like a fun summer job. Lastly, on there, we do charge a portion of public works time to projects along the waterfront. I want to say it's around 25% of the, the department as a whole. Maybe a bit less, maybe 20% gets charged to the harbor. And that's what that number is there. So again, I don't necessarily want to go through each of these in detail, but I want the information out there. So if you do have any questions, you can reach out to the, the harbor department. And the maintenance and operations, the total maintenance budget for harbor admins 133,000. But that's largely from the insurance, which I have budgeted at 90,000. That number, I'm going to hopefully get a better estimate before the, the June budget for adoption. And in the last couple of years, I've underestimated what that ended up being. But I'm hoping several years of double-digit increases will start to plateau. But that's the, the majority of the spend there in that maintenance account. And then in the, the contract services, it's our net mooring system primarily, as well as some of our other computer tools within the harbor, as well as the city attorney retainer. City attorney fees in general have been relatively flat. If you do see some increases, I've kind of rounded up. Last year, we had, say, 22,800, and just for making easy math, I, I did round them up to 25. And so that's why you see a slight increase on the slide. But generally speaking, in discussions with Scott, we're, we're relatively flat with the, the budget we had last year. So if you do see increases, it's really more just on, on my part in rounding.
Just, just for informa- what is the state, the state lands rent?
So we actually don't own the, the Hamilton Cove. The Hamilton Cove is controlled by the, the state, and we have a lease agreement for it. And so we do have to pay a percentage of the revenues we collect from renting out the, the moorings in Hamilton Cove. We, we pay that to the state. Again, that's one where it's, it's based on the number of rentals. And in years past, I've kind of underestimated what that number was. We've made up for it by, you know, being under budget in other accounts, but I'm trying to make sure we have the, the true account or the, the true number there for that. But that's what that number is.
Thank you. And I was curious, I know it's not a very big number, but advertising, what, what's the harbor advertising?
I think there's two things that fall in there. One, they do pay for a yearbook advertisement, and they do buy the little pins that they hand out to, you know, the, the children in the summer months. But the, the larger number there is they are looking to kind of expand online and by-the-phone payments. And so they're looking at printout business cards to hand to the boaters to provide instructions on how to pay online.
Oh, with like a QR code?
So I think, so I think that, that's probably the reason for the increase. I think last year in the budget, it was 1,000, and we maybe spent 500. But I thi- I think we did put some additional monies for promoting the, the online payments. So I think that's why that number went up. Again, harbor operations, just a few I want to call out just because they're larger numbers. I did break down salaries and benefits between harbor patrol, harbor maintenance, and parking control, harbor sanitation. Utilities, we do charge, or the harbor does pay the sewer fund and saltwater fund an annual amount, and that's because the, the harbor has a number of restrooms. And so to make, pay its share essentially of sewer charges, saltwater chal- charges, as well as trash charges, those are kind of lumped together in that utilities number there. And so you can see of the 690,000 in maintenance and operation for harbor operations, 465,000 of that is utilities. Again, in the contract service, it's, it's primarily the, the shoreboat subsidy there. That, that makes up the majority of that, 292. But again, from an operations standpoint, labor, it looks like a little over half of the, the harbor operations side. Then again, in harbor public works, just quickly touch on the major contracts. We do have a contract for the lifeguard services with county fire. That number is an estimate that I created. We typically do get the contract sometime in early June, but I do have an updated estimate from them. So I'll, I may update that, given the numbers we receive from the sheriff. It's not necessarily an apples-to-apples comparison, but I do have it increasing by, you know, six and a half percent. The other major contracts are for the trash collection, as well as the restroom maintenance along the waterfront. And so that's how we got that nearly 1.5 million dollar number there.
So, so just a question, the, the waterfront trash collection is that much, but then we have other trash collection in another slide? So for example, this is the con- is this the contract with Eddie Vega?
Yep.
Okay, is there another chunk that comes because he works off of the main?
Since, since the vast majority of his activity has been along the waterfront, we've been allocating 100% of his contract to the harbor. That's something we, we can look at. I know he does, similar with the restrooms, they do clean the restrooms at City Hall, but the, if you look at the, the number of stalls and the number of times a day the restrooms are cleaned, were relatively, kind of off the waterfront's a relatively small percentage of their overall.
I mean, you don't need to break it down for me. I was just curious.
Well, and I'm curious about the restroom maintenance contract. Does that include the casino dock bathrooms?
That would, yes.
Okay.
I thought did the.
Then why are they closed?
Didn't?
I think the casino dock bathrooms are part of the.
Yeah, contract.
Contract with the.
Okay.
The fuel dock operator.
I have an answer for you on this.
Why?
Because I asked, I asked a question this week. So it's, the fuel dock is the operator.
Right.
And there were repairs that Public Works finished just last week, actually. And so they were calling their team on Friday to let them know that they could be reopened again. So that was just this, this past Friday, so.
Well, I had.
Because I had the same question, too.
Different conversation, so I was just wondering about.
Yeah, we, we struggle with making sure those are open.
Okay.
More often than not.
Okay, because, yeah, they're beautiful.
Yeah.
Let's use them.
Yeah, I agree.
Especially if we're paying rent on them.
The, the other one just to highlight is we do have professional services falconry there at the bottom. That's not the full falcon contract. Most of the falcon contract comes out of the sewer fund. But again, with the, the sewer fund, it's really based, all the, the expense there are based on what we estimated in the cost of service study. And so if we were to be looking to expand beyond the cost of service study, it, it would have to be picked up by another fund and given kind of the purpose of the falconry. It, it seemed appropriate for the, the harbor fund to, to pick up a percentage. It's a relatively small percentage of the overall contract, I'd say about 20%. But that isn't the entire falcon contract, that's just a portion of the harbor.
And so that's for the falcon to fly around and scare away the seagulls, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
So was he, he was gone for a while, and now he's back? Because I haven't really seen him for a while.
Go ahead, tell him, we contracted with Dave Long.
He's back. I mean, he's.
He's the falcon.
Right.
So we, I mean, we, we did reduce the service during COVID, but that more or less has, has been restored.
Okay.
The birds also molt during the off-season, so they're not able to do as much.
Okay.
In terms of the off-season.
Okay, well, that would make sense. Okay. Just curious, because I, I felt I hadn't seen him for a while. COVID makes sense to me.
Okay, thank you.
A question on the restrooms as well, while we're just on that topic real quick. Is it possible to look at what the contract increase would be if we were to have more steady or full-time attendance at the pier and or-mole restrooms?
We're, we're looking at our restroom maintenance contract, cleaning contract as a whole, yes.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
So the next movement along is the harbor capital fund, so that's Fund 104. So a portion of our cross-channel warfage is dedicated to capital activities. We do charge a portion of the public works director time and a portion of the harbor master's time to the harbor capital fund, as well as there's some annual maintenance that maybe doesn't rise to the level of being able to capitalize, but we've historically charged it to the capital fund. And so a lot of that is kind of the minor float maintenance, mooring maintenance. So if we're replacing $2,000 worth of chains on a mooring, that's not necessarily something we'd capitalize. But there are some areas where it's kind of a gray area of where, whether it's a maintenance account or it's a capital account. And so we do have some maintenance activity in Fund 104. Contract services is mainly the pesticide contract down at the waterfront. Historically, it's been charged to 104. And then we do charge some of general admin's time to the, the harbor capital fund and a little bit of the, the garages' time as well for their assistance on capital projects. And so if we have the, the 1.4 million after. And so if we have the 1.4 million after kind of our budgeted spend, we'd have 850,000 or thereabouts as funds available to fund CIP in the harbor. So that would be what we'd be using as our local match when we're pursuing grant funds for portions of it. So in addition to any grant funds, we'd have 850,000 next year for local match purposes.
Is that also, is every year, don't we have a five-year plan to replace the pilings? Does that come out of that number, or is that something separate?
That likely would be captured in our CIP schedule, should be captured in our CIP schedule.
Separate from this?
Separate from this, yeah. So again, in the kind of the maintenance and operations, we do have 30,000 a year to lope maintenance and mooring maintenance, as well as maintenance of premises. Storm damage, 25,000. Vehicle equipment maintenance, 60,000, and so that's to give the harbor the ability to utilize services over town for some of the fleet maintenance-type activities, that's what that is there for. And lastly in the section
I'm sorry, before you go there.
Yep.
Are we still doing the bay, testing the bay? Or when do we test the bay?
Testing?
Uh huh.
Yes, correct, we get, we get readings.
We get readings monthly, and they come to my office, and then I notify LA County lifeguards.
So Reese used to test here, but we don't have anybody on staff that does the local testing?
No, they come over and do it.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay.
Good, because you were testing a lot in the day, yeah, so good. I'm sorry.
I probably should have mentioned in the beginning, the focus on the presentation's going to be the general fund, the harbor fund, and then the internal service fund, so that's admin, finance, et cetera. I didn't prepare slides for sewer, saltwater, solid waste, or the special revenue funds, but the vast majority of operating activity either falls into the kind of the one or three, one of the three core areas we're covering today, so the final presentation, I might touch on those funds a little more, but this represents probably over 80% of our operating activity at the citywide. So the last section here is the internal service funds, operating expenditures. So there's three funds within that, the general administration, which includes elected officials, so that would be the five council members plus the city treasurer. The, right now in the budget, and we have it more as a placeholder, we have 4,000 in training and travel per elected official, and so that's what that $24,000 number is. We haven't spent that much this year, but that's what the, right now, what we have in the budget for that. Again, legal, there's 3,000, that's really for the travel costs for when Scott comes out, and we haven't come close to that this year, but we wanted to make sure we have the money available to bring him out. And then the 155,000 in contract services, that's the, kind of the general legal services, the city attorney BB&amp;K provides, and that's flat from what we had in the budget last year. I may have rounded it up to 155, but it's relatively flat to what we had last year. Admin is going to be the city manager's office, finance is the finance department, and then general government is kind of all the things that maybe don't fit evenly in finance or city manager's office, so some of it's like maintenance activities around city hall, some of it could be contracts that kind of overlap. So for example, our city auditor contract falls within general government. You can make an argument, it could belong in finance, but it's historically been grouped in general government, and so I try not to move things if I don't have to, just because it makes easier year-over-year comparisons, but that's what the, those categories are. Then we have the insurance fund, which is our city's general liability and property insurance, as well as any litigation costs or claims costs. And then the vehicle maintenance is the garage, that would be our two mechanics, plus any maintenance activity up at the garage. So again, I don't necessarily want to go through all of these in detail, but we definitely are available to answer any questions. For admin and finance, I did try to split out some, just to make it a little clearer, since we have a large membership and dues, I wanted to make sure that the organizations are reflected in there, and I more or less looked at historical spend and then rounded up for the next fiscal year.
So there will be another election in this fiscal year, correct?
We have, we have 25,000 in the budget, I believe there will be a primary election in the next
There'll be a media cell election also.
That is
So is that enough? I don't know what, because we had to go in with the county, what did they charge us?
Typically, it runs around 25,000, they usually recommend that we do like a 20% increase for the next year.
And I think we were slight, I think we came in under 25 last time, and we had our own ballot measures, which fairly nominal, but it did add to the cost. I mean, we can, we can definitely look at that number, and if we need to increase it, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, not to get too in the weeds, but the contract services that fall under finances, we do use a budget software, OpenGov, which is a tool that allows department heads to kind of work on their budgets without me necessarily being in the room. We also use a service provider to assist with ambulance billing, and that comes out of that account, as well as we use a payroll software. The other larger charge within the finance department is our monthly software charge, and that's our accounting, cash-receiving, financial reporting software, is at 50,000. So again, in general government, kind of some of the larger numbers that fall within it would be our utilities, so that's city hall utilities, phone, internet, electricity, maintenance of premises. We, last year had 25,000, and that's, I believe, the account we use to help, we're looking to replace the flooring on the dais. Advertising, that's public notices for the council meetings primarily, is what falls into that account. Communications is where the city self, employee cell phones, but also the phone system in general is the big one that falls in communications. Under contract services, the larger ones are, we do have 60,000 for Townsend, we have 90,000 for accounting and auditing, about half of that, or a little more than half of it is, that is our external audit, but I also utilize within there our vacation rental monitoring, comes in and out of that 90,000, it's about 15,000, as well as I utilize vendors for some of the Gatsby 87, Gatsby 70, some of the accounting compliance requires some actuarial work, or some kind of specialized accounting assistance, and that also comes out of that account. So it's not just the audit in that 90,000. The IT numbers, I'm still working with Pat on firm numbers, so those both are really just placeholders, I just kind of looked at historical spend there, so those numbers still could change between now and June, but I just wanted something in there as more of a placeholder, but I wouldn't expect it to be significantly different.
And on the IT, would you put some of that also, like in the harbor department, or something like that, or you just keep it in one?
So if it's services that kind of benefit citywide as a whole, I try to keep them in the Fund 101, and then the harbor does pay its share as part of the internal service charges. And so when I'm taking all the admin and finance costs, I then look at things like headcount, payroll, number of contracts, number of warrants cut, different factors to figure out how to fairly split up the admin costs. So the harbor does pay for a portion of IT, but it pays for it through the internal service charges.
Okay. I guess sometimes it'd be interesting to see, like, what is our total IT cost? Because when you spread it across, we don't know what that is.
Well, this actually gives you that, this is our
This is it, the 90K is it, okay.
I mean, it wouldn't factor if we have plans in the CIP budget that are IT-related, so I think two years ago, we replaced servers for around 40,000, and so that wouldn't necessarily be reflected in that number there, that's more the contract services, and then some of our recurring subscription services are kind of reflected in those two IT numbers. But the, kind of the major outlays would be reflected separately.
Okay, thank you.
Again, this is one I probably need to look at some more, I have some kind of placeholder numbers in, but we do have an estimate from Sierra regarding our general liability, property, and other insurance coverages, and so I have those going up by 10.4% to 702,000. Insurance markets, it's kind of an interesting time, we could probably spend a whole 30 minutes discussing, and the cities aren't immune to that, I mean, it's a combination of major property damages from natural disasters, as well as large settlements due to different litigation issues cities face, that's really placing a lot of challenges on the insurance side. The number here that probably needs to be looked at in a little more detail is legal expenses, so some years we have more litigation expenses than others. Last year, we had a major case that was a considerable amount in legal costs. That number might be too high for next year, so we might be able to lower that down and spread that savings around, but I kind of wanted to err on the high side for the ones I don't really have good estimates for, but that's, that's what would come out of that legal expense, it would be any litigation that the city was involved in outside of kind of the normal operations, if you will. Again, not a lot of change in vehicle maintenance, so that's our two mechanics up at the garage rent, and then the vehicle equipment maintenance, that 100,000, that's where we buy tires, oil, filters, probably not the best person to talk about it, but any NAPA or auto parts bill, we usually end up charging there. And again, so that cost gets shared amongst all the departments that utilize the garage through an internal service charge.
Where does gas go?
Gas generally is charged specific to the department, so generally, when someone fills up, we can track who's, which department is.
But that's in here somewhere in this?
It's not in the vehicle maintenance, it's in the specifics, so if I went back to the fire department
Oh, I didn't need to, you have to go through
That's all right.
It's also in the warrants, you can see it in the
So in the, the fire department, you can see we have gas, oil, diesel, and we have 30,000 in the, in the budget, so we do, we don't charge those to the internal service, we do charge those directly to the, to the funds. So then lastly, just kind of a labor overview, but from a kind of a head, a true headcount standpoint, and not broken up based on the labor allocations. So if you kind of break down the departments, we have admin, finance, fire, community service, planning, public works, and harbor, last year in the budget, we had 72.8 full-time equivalents, and that was before mid-year, so that 72.8 was as adopted last June. So you can see that we did, or we are looking potentially to add an admin analyst position within admin, with an emphasis on grants administration. We do have an additional part-time maintenance personnel under the recreation or community services department, and the idea behind that would be an emphasis on gardening and We do have one fewer in planning, we're contracting the services, and we're currently in the budget, we have that as a contracted service for next year. And then lastly, at mid-year, we did add two public works maintenance workers, so they'd be in the budget for the full year this year. Just to kind of call attention to a couple of things on there when you're looking at the numbers, things to keep in mind is, within the harbor, that 24.9 in fiscal year 20 did include 1.9 employees related to the fuel dock, which we no longer operate, so the harbor is still down a couple employees, I believe one and a half, if you kind of factor for, for those things. Similarly, with public works, two of those, or one of those positions in there was never filled, so they never had the 21.9, just from a budget standpoint, and then two of them were admin, one admin analyst, and one admin assistant, and so while we are looking to add an admin analyst under administration, we were down, or if you're looking at pre-COVID, an admin assistant and admin analyst in public work, so it's, it's more of a reorg than a true new position, if you will. And so you can see we're still projecting to be down slightly from a labor standpoint, from our pre-COVID number of 83.7, with, currently we're proposing 75.3 FTEs. Again, the next few slides kind of give you the historical breakdown of where those positions were, you know, I did combine a few positions just to make it fit a little easier on a page. So you can see, just to, not to highlight finance, but we were at six pre-COVID, and we are looking at five next year, so finance is also one of the departments still, but we're operating strong with five.
Nice.
Or we will, we have a job posting, I guess I can promote my own department. We are, we are currently seeking an account technician to make our team up to five, so even though we had five in the budget this year, we only have been operating with four, down from our peak of six pre-COVID, so we're looking to get up to at least five. So if you're interested, you can apply on the city's website, hopefully you're watching. Let's see, fire includes code enforcement, community services, the, we are looking to add 0.5 FTEs for our maintenance worker, with the idea of an emphasis for our maintenance workers on the landscaping. Another change within community services, it's not really a change in headcount, but potentially a change in positions, we're going from 2.3 rec leaders and aides to 1.8, but we are looking to potentially increase the rec coordinator from one to one and a half, so then we'd have a part-time rec coordinator in addition to the 1.8 rec leaders and aides. But the, the increase in headcount is coming from that maintenance position in that department. And with public works, if you factor out that one position in the garage that was never filled, we're down 3.9, but two of those were those admin analyst and admin assistant positions, and we are looking to add an admin analyst, but to the, the admin department rather than to the public work specifically. But they would also be assisting public works on admin, admin analyst-type activities, so it's really more of a reporting structure, if you will.
Um, so we're, we're looking not to hire an assistant planner, we're just going to keep contracting that out?
That's the current plan, we're going to run this out and see how it goes with the current contract that we have with Sagecrest.
Okay.
And then lastly, in the harbor, again, you can see we are down two full-time positions, but really one and a half FTEs from our peak pre-COVID at the patrol officer level, so where a lot of the decrease is coming from is we don't operate the fuel dock, so a lot of the, the maintenance and the fuel dock supervisor and fuel dock attendant positions, you know, no longer exist, and so that's part of the reason we went from 24/9 to 21/1, but if you kind of factor out the fuel dock, we still would be down about one and a half FTEs in the harbor. So that concludes the presentation. Again, this is kind of a working draft of where we're at, you know, if there are questions tonight, we're happy to answer them, I've kind of prepped the department heads, they're able to speak to any of their specific asks, but we're also happy to meet offline if there's questions after you have a chance to review. Kind of the key slide, I guess, to highlight back on, is if we adopted kind of the budget as is in the general fund, we would be looking at increasing, or having 1.1 million available to fund capital and to fund or subsidize other funds. Again, that's with our revenue estimates, and I believe I used 7 million for TOT, currently on track this year, we'll probably exceed 7.5, we'll probably be somewhere around 7.6, 7.7. So again, I want to make sure when we're setting our revenue estimates, we don't need a record-setting year, but at the same time, I also want, I don't necessarily want to be off by millions of dollars when I come up with the estimates either, so it is kind of a balancing act there of making sure we're, we're setting a conservative estimate, but still, you know, relatively close to what we expect.
I think you've been, how many years you've been here?
Actually, five years as of last week, I think.
Yeah, I mean, and you've been really right on, dude, I mean, you've really done a great job.
Thank you.
And the community appreciates it as well, because they, they understand what you're saying, and we understand it, and, and working with staff and figuring that out, it's amazing what, how accurate you are, really.
I mean, it's a team effort, so I couldn't do without, you know, the, my finance team, as well as the department heads, it's gotten a little easier every year doing the budget, you know, because a lot of it is, you learn a little every year, and so it's definitely been a good project.
Well, and happy belated anniversary.
Thank you.
Great, any questions, or Gabby? Any questions, or Gabby, have you received any comments?
I have not received any.
Any comments from the audience? No? Okay. Now we'll go to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Matt. So for the consent calendar, we have the following items. We have minutes, seeking approval of minutes from April fourth, 2023 regular council meeting. Seeking approval of total expenditures for April tenth, 2023, through April twenty-first, 2023, totaling seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and seventy cents. Item three, finance to continue to hold remote teleconference virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill three six one. Asking council to reconsider the circumstances of COVID-19, state of emergency as proclaimed by the governor, and COVID-19's continuing impact, and determine that state or local officials have impressed or recommended, imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing in connection with COVID-19, and as such, continuing to utilize protections of Assembly Bill three sixty-one will protect the health and safety of attendees. And finally, item four, adopt an ordinance amending chapter four dash four point one seven zero three of the vehicle code, setting a date for mandating electrification of commercial auto ads. Asking council to adopt an ordinance, the City of Avalon amending chapter four dash four point one seven oh three of the Avalon municipal code, and set that date for commercial auto ads.
Does anybody want to pull something for discussion? Okay, may we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve items one through four.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
General business?
General business, first item, item number five. Asking council authorize a budget amendment increasing the Pebley Beach Road riprap project, project eighteen zero 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 eight, and fund number one oh five seven five dash six five four seven by fifty-five thousand dollars. Authorize the city manager or his designated procure per the city's purchasing policy twenty new K-rail fence panels and twenty-one fence panel saddles from Boulder Contracting Company at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. I believe council has received the staff report. If there's any questions to that, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Does anybody else help us pay for those?
We have, one of our contracts or agreements, we do have, we have received some funding for Pebley Beach Road. It doesn't, it's not specifically earmarked for this, it's for other, other needs, but some of it would probably apply to this.
Okay, great.
That two mil grant we got, is that what you're talking about?
No, we have an agreement with Island Company on the Pebley Beach Road easement that they pay thirty-seven thousand five hundred in January towards our overall needs, so.
Okay, well, I was looking at this, and I don't know if we need to do this right now because we are approaching the dry season. We are also, as we all know, that those of us that have been here for a long time, we know that the rainy season is rather cyclical. The last time that the reservoir spilled was in 2018, so that was five years ago. And I think that we'll most likely, I mean, just working at Edison and working in water for as long as I have, I think we're most likely going to trend that way again, another five years before, you know, so we're going to go down and down and down. So I don't think we're going to have the, the major storms that we saw this year, which were once in a, I mean, they were huge. I mean, we just, we haven't seen that. So I don't feel that this is necessary at the moment, but I would, I would like to pursue the remediation of that hillside. And, you know, I've been pushing the ring net barriers. And so I kind of looked at the Boulder consultants online, they don't have a website, but it does say that they do all kinds of things. And so since we've been working with them for the K-rails and the fences, perhaps they have some sort of engineering knowledge or can have an engineer look at that and assess the possibility of expanding ring net barriers. And if I'm not mistaken, we do have a consultant right now under contract?
We do, and we are looking at that. We are, we are trying to narrow it down to really a linear foot price, so we can figure out how much of that netting we would want to go in different directions on hillsides. So we are looking to do that, that's going forward no matter what.
Because just the way I see it, it would, it would pay for itself in the long run. It would, it would save us money in the long run, not only in the materials of the K-rails and the fences and all that stuff, but the labor involved to switch them out, put them up, and all that kind of stuff. And then, how do you throw those things away? It's metal. Well, I guess you can recycle it through the dump or something like that. But I really don't feel that it's, it's a huge pressing need. Thoughts?
Just if I, if I could real quickly do that, I appreciate what you're saying. I do understand that from a timing of it, but for example, we had to, we had a hillslide down directly, almost directly across from the casino during this winter, and we had to go and grab at night our K-rails and add to those K-rails there. And without a stockpile or without available K-rails, if that happened in the future, we, we would have to take them from somewhere else. Because we can't, it's just so difficult to get things here in a timely manner. To have a stockpile and to have things ready is critical for us, and I'm sure Jamie has some.
Yeah, just to elaborate a little more, so we, we actually ran out of fence panels this past winter. We've been robbing them from other areas. Right now we have, we actually, right now we're actually minus four fence panels. So if we didn't get these, we have to continue to rob them from other areas, which we can do. But another factor to remember is these take, there's a tremendous amount of lead time with these. It's probably three or four months to get them in, so which what kind of brings us into the closer to the next rainy season. So if we hold off on ordering them, we just got to make sure that if we do intend to have them for the next rainy season, we probably want to order them three or four months in advance. So I would say we'd have to order, have them ordered by July at the latest, just to add to that.
And it's just not the inclement weather that causes the rocks to come down.
Exactly.
Rocks come, the rocks come down constantly. So at some point, behind those barriers, they fill up and they get bent out of shape, and they're going to need to be replaced. So I would rather have a stockpile that we can, no, I totally agree that we need to have, look into the future, and, but I think we, until we do have that final fix, we need to, to keep the road safe.
Well, I agree there, I don't, I.
I travel that road a lot, I work out there.
Yeah. I believe Scott Campbell had some comments as well that you'd like to make.
Yeah, I'd just note that part of the agreement we have with the Island Company in order to keep that road open with our insurance company is that we provide protection year round on that road through the K-rails until we can put up the netting. And so, you know, if there's a problem with that, then our insurance may not be issued. We have special insurance for that road, and so that's part of the reason why we need this protection up there, is to maintain the insurance.
Oh, sure. Okay. Yeah, you weren't debating, I know you weren't at all saying let's not buy this stuff, you were saying, but looking ahead, because I'm really concerned about all those big giant trees along Casino Way. I mean, and those trees are bigger than rocks, and I don't, you know, there's just so many disasters almost looking like they could happen along.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And, you know, it was, it was a great idea. I mean, I remember when we didn't have anything.
Yeah.
And it was a great idea when they came up with that system to put that up, and I don't have a problem with it at all. It's just that technology offers us a more effective way and a more cost-effective way in the long run. I mean, because not only that, but when they crash through the fences, you know, there's the giant potholes. So then there's more expense there and all of that kind of stuff. And, you know, so it's just, I would like to, you know, start the sequo process as quick as possible. I'd like to, I'd seriously like that project to happen on both ends, out to the casino and out to Pebley. I just think it would, it would save lives and it would save money all the way around.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And I would just note for the history that we once had a project approved out there for the netting, we were going to use redevelopment funds for that, and then the state took away all redevelopment funds that were available for that. So we have gone through this before. Coastal Commission is very much in favor of this plan. And so now that we've got money, we will, we can relook at what we had, had approved, gosh, twelve, I think it was twelve years ago.
Wow, so we already had a study done?
Yeah.
We already had a study done to put up the netting. The cost was two point two million dollars back then.
Perfect.
It's obviously risen, I would assume it's risen significantly, but then the technology's better. But we did have Coastal Commission approval for it. Now, that only lasts three years, so we'd have to reapply, but having done it once, I don't have any doubt that Coastal Commission would approve it again.
Okay, cool.
We just, we just didn't have a contract with a signature on it.
Right.
So when they got redevelopment, the only thing they allowed were those that had contracts signed. We were in that process, but they denied us.
Cool, so we're, we're down the road on that. So that's very encouraging to me, and I hope we can just pick up that and, and bring it into 2023, 24, you know, whatever we need to do to do that and, and get that going. So in the meantime, you know, we can continue to put a Band-Aid on this and, you know, have a backlog of our K-rails and fences and stuff, which is fine, but I really want that to move forward. I want to see that happen in my lifetime.
Do you know something we don't know?
No, I was just kidding. You know me, I'm a kid, I can't help it.
Okay, if there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to authorize a budget amendment increasing the Pebley Beach Road riprap project, project one eight zero 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 eight, and fund one zero five seven five dash six five four seven by fifty-five thousand dollars. Authorize the city manager or their designated procure per the city's purchasing policy twenty new K-rail fence panels and twenty-one fence panel saddles from Boulder Contracting Company at a cost not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. No further comment, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Item six.
Item six is a request to authorize budgeted amendment for change orders for the Villa Casino archway restoration. Asking council to approve change orders one through five as provided by MKS Specialty Finishes, Inc. amend the fiscal year budget twenty-two, twenty-three budgeted by increasing the Casino Way Improvement Project expenditure count one oh four seven oh dash six six seven nine by sixty-five thousand dollars, and authorize the additional expenditures of eighty thousand six hundred dollars and ninety-two cents to MKS Specialty Finishes, Inc. for the Villa Casino Arch Restoration Project. I know council has received the staff report, I'm not going to go through that in detail, but there were five separate items that as they came up, we believed it was critical to move that project along. We weren't sure what, we knew it was in bad shape cosmetically, we weren't sure how bad the shape was structurally until they got in there, and it was much worse than expected. We were somewhat faced with a decision, do we do it at the cost proposed and probably have to go, come back around in three to five years and face this all again because it would just be patchwork. It was really, you know, working with Matt Sullivan to get the final product that we got. It was, it was necessary to go this route. We do realize it's significant change orders. It's not really our goal to go into these, we try to price them out as best as we can, but this, all five of these items, I think, you know, the electrical, putting that in there, and then putting the final finish, which we believe will last for a significantly longer period of time, was well worth it.
Do we have a warranty?
I don't believe, I mean, whatever warranty comes on the material itself from, from Matt himself, no, but the material has warranties connected to it.
Well, it hadn't been done in how many years? Then maybe a coat of paint? Maybe when it was built?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, is there a motion? Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion, approve change orders one through five provided by MKS Specialty Finishes, Inc. amend the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget by increasing the Casino Way improvements, capital improvement expenditure count one zero four seven zero dash six six seven nine by sixty-five thousand dollars, and three, authorize the additional expenditure of eighty thousand six hundred point nine two to MKS Specialty Finishes, Inc. for the Villa Casino Arch Restoration Project.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, call for the vote.
Oh, can I just ask a question real quick? Moving forward on projects like this where we're having to do repairs on seaside, waterside projects, can we look at the original increase of the contingency fund? So just adding additional percentage, whether it's ten to fifteen or even twenty percent additional contingency? I feel like every time we do anything around saltwater, you're looking at at least somewhere between fifteen to thirty percent above what is expected, and we just need to start adding that in and budgeting for it.
That's a good idea. Very point.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
No, you're good. Okay, item number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't take the vote. The vote count, we're missing. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
Okay, item number seven.
Item number seven is general business, item is city council acting as the housing authority. So this is a request to approve design and construction documents for two oh six East Whitley retaining wall project. Authorize the city manager or his designated develop and release a request or proposal for qualified contractors to build a retaining wall and associated roadway improvements at two oh six East Whitley. So again, this project, first of all, housing funds will be utilized for this project, and we have housing funds that are somewhat, need some timely utilization before the end of this year, that we're, we've already earmarked for this. So the goal here with this project would be to build a retaining wall, to do a couple things. Number one, move all of the current parking off the street to onsite for not only the current structure, but the build-out of additional units on that property. So it'll move nine, it'll create nine parking spaces off-street on two oh six East Whitley, which is a bad corner there to begin with, certainly for safety vehicles. The second issue it would do would be to provide, provide the foundation to move forward with the further expansion and construction of the next part of that, next phase of that project, which is to build a new building, and we're going to need that retaining wall there anyway. So we would go out, you know, we're just looking to go out to bid for this to continue down the road with this project.
So I'm sorry, again, about the parking spaces?
So right now, there are, there's parking in front of that two oh six East Whitley, but those are on the street. What we're looking to do is move those onto the property of two oh six East Whitley. That's a slope currently, so we have to build a retaining wall in order to get that level. It'll move all, all the parking, we'll be able to create nine parking spaces on the property itself and off the street, which is, which would provide one parking space for every future unit that would be able to be built.
And, and the people that are currently parking there, there would be no parking on the street in front. Correct.
But that's just at the very top, right?
Top, just before you make that bend.
Yeah, so down at the bottom.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
I'm safe.
For now.
Don't take my parking.
Okay, questions?
I think that's a good idea, especially with that sewer problem.
Okay. Let's just, you know, shore up that whole area, because that was, that was a mess.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve of the design and construction documents for two oh six East Whitley retaining wall project, and authorize the city manager or his designated develop and release a request for proposal for qualified contractors to build a retaining wall at two oh six East Whitley.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, further comments? Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
All ayes.
And if there's no further action, meeting is adjourned. And if there's no further action, meeting is adjourned. If you'd like to step in.